Hey Susan, this is Michael Wengler, Vice President of IT at the college. We're just waiting, we're waiting on a meeting to wrap up before we begin to be more trusted.
Okay, well I just wanted to make sure I'd get on, thank you, I'll just-
Yeah, you're, you're on and fine, so just, just hang out with me for a little bit.
I sure will, I will, no worries, sorry.
No, no, you're perfectly fine, I'm glad, I'm glad you're able to connect and everything went well, so like I said, I, I think they're wrapping up a meeting.
This is Michael Wengler, Vice President of IT.
Thank you so much. Hi.
How are you? I'm good, I hope you are.
I am, I miss, I miss seeing you all in person.
I know, it's, these virtual things are hard sometimes.
Well, they've been really hard for me, so I know they're a lot easier for you.
Well, they are, but they're, they get old, you'd like to just see people face to face.
I know, I, you know, I thought about just coming down there today, but I thought, you know, there can't be but ten, and that wouldn't be a very good idea.
Yeah, well, it's a beautiful day here, so you, you need to enjoy the sunshine.
And it is here too, thank goodness, and we're all well, so that's the most important thing.
Yeah, that's great.
Thanks for all you do all down there, I know it's been, I know it's been hard.
It's definitely been a challenge the last, last couple of months.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
You know how the school system is, so it's-
Oh, yes.
Challenging when you have-
This is the only time that I've been glad I'm, I'm not in it.
Yeah, I bet so.
I mean, I just, I've missed being over at Community College, to tell you the truth, but this, this has made me glad I'm not teaching.
Yeah, I bet so, especially for the middle school and high school, and well, even the elementary, I don't know how they did it, to be honest with you.
You know what, I honestly think it was harder for the lower of the grades.
I could imagine.
Yeah, because they have got to have one-on-one help, and I know I've got a, the grandchildren, one that's in the, a third grade, and, and one that's in kindergarten, and I know that the kindergarten did fine, but the, you know, the third grader had a lot more Zoom meetings and all that, so I just think, I think it's hard for the teachers.
Yeah, it has to be, it's definitely a, a trying time for us all.
Boy, it is, this will make us have our face, won't it?
Absolutely.
Well, it's good to talk to you.
Good to talk to you, Susan. I'm gonna mute myself now.
Am I supposed to mute myself?
It, it helps the feedback, so there's not as much feedback, so-
Well, tell me what I do.
So, have you got your mouse to scroll over your picture there, and no bar?
I don't have a mouse, I just, I said, just I'm on an iPad, so I guess I just go to that top in that right-hand cor- a right-hand corner and punch that microphone?
Yes, that microphone.
Well, good, I'll, I'll mute myself, and if I can unmute, you'll know I'm here. Okay, I did, now I'm off, though.
I can still hear you.
But you can't see me.
I see the chair.
Well, now, how'd I do that?
I don't know.
Well, I'm gonna get off if I'm gonna do that.
There you are, I see, yeah.
Michael, they're wrapping up a meeting in the Walker Center, so we'll be connected here in just a few minutes.
I'm just gonna stay quiet.
No, you can, I can see you now again, Susan.
Okay, well, I'll be really quiet.
I don't know if you'll let me, I might commute you on my end, let me try that. Yeah, I got you muted on my end.
Hello?
Hello?
Good afternoon.
Everybody.
Doing well?
Bill Davis calling in.
Hey Mike, can you hear us, Morgan?
Yes, we can hear you, Dr. Cox.
Great, great, alright, we, we are, we are, uh, transitioning here from our lunching here, which is the insurance commissioner and this and that, so we're gonna get started here in just, just in a minute, to give just a little, a little time to get everybody corralled here. We will get started.
Hello? Hello?
Hello, hello, this is Jay Benoy.
Hey Jay, it's Cynthia, I had to join by phone.
I had to join by phone too, so that's the only way I can do it, but I'm here.
Right. Unfortunately, I'm at the ER with my mother-in-law, so.
Oh no, I'm sorry.
It's okay, um, hopefully she's gonna be fine.
Wow, you been there all morning?
Yes, I have.
Oh Cynthia, I'm sorry, well, I hope she's gonna be okay.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, have you heard anyone else on the call, yet?
Have not, no.
Okay.
Hey Cynthia, this is Michael Wengler, there's, the, the room is full, we have several on the call, we're waiting for the Walker Center to make a transition from a earlier, uh, session, so we'll be delayed just a few minutes.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Corralled here right now.
Appreciate it.
We're, uh-
Okay, great.
Just so you all know, we can, we've got speakers set up in here, so we can hear you all loud and clear, hopefully you'll be able to hear us, and we've got a number of microphones around the tables, but if you have any trouble hearing people speak, if you'll just let us know, uh, we'll try to adjust and, uh, make sure you're able to hear us, we'll be getting started here in just a couple of minutes.
Okay, okay.
Dr. Cox, you're gonna be up in five minutes.
You okay?
Line now.
I think you're on, I think, I think you, uh, you can hear us now.
Hello, give a thumbs up if you can hear me.
Yeah.
Okay, great, we've got some special guests here today, and Taylor will, uh, introduce our guest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, good afternoon, my name is Brian Taylor, I'm Chief State Fire Marshal, uh, with the Department of Insurance, Office of State Fire Marshal, it's a pleasure to be here with you in Wilkes County.
I'll jump off then, when he comes back.
Grant checks, had the opportunity to speak, uh, here today with the folks that do fire and, uh, public safety training, uh, it's an honor at this time to introduce you to your state, uh, Insurance Commissioner and State Fire Marshal, Mike Cozy, it's a pleasure and honor to be able to serve under, uh, Commissioner Cozy, uh, going throughout North Carolina, and especially rural North Carolina, to see, uh, the needs, uh, and, and how we can help from, from Raleigh, as most say that, uh, we're here from Raleigh and here to help, but, uh, we were able to, uh, provide some checks actually to Allegheny County and, uh, Wilkes County today, five thousand dollar checks, I'm sure the Commissioner will, uh, touch on that, but at this time, uh, Insurance Commissioner, State Fire Marshal, Mike Cozy.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you all so much, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. President and trustees, it's good to be back in Wilkes County, and it's good to be back at Wilkes Community College, uh, it's an honor and privilege for me to serve as your state Insurance Commissioner and State Fire Marshal, and I tell you, we've learned a lot here this morning, uh, from your public safety, uh, training message, and the one message that's resonated loud and clear that we've been talking about for the past three or four years is North Carolina depends on volunteer firefighters, and our volunteer fire departments are struggling to recruit volunteers and to retain those volunteers, so we want to do everything we can, working with the community college system and the high schools and other schools to, uh, reach out to the younger ages, uh, to get them involved and interested in the fire service, and not everybody knows this, Mr. Chairman, but I, I am a product of the community college system, when I left the farm in Guilford County and finished high school, uh, I had some cousins that were going to college in Raleigh at NC State, and, uh, some of them, uh, ended up going to the community college and, and told me about engineering program there that had a work co-op, so when I left high school, I ended up going to what is Wake Tech, uh, today, under a work co-op program, and I got an engineering degree, associate's degree in civil engineering technology, so that, that has served me well as I worked in the construction industry and construction management before my insurance career, but it's been an honor for me to, uh, uh, travel the state for the past four years, and recently, for the past five weeks, we've been going around to visit our volunteer fire departments, taking the, uh, mask, personal protective equipment, smoke alarms for our annual smoke alarm campaign, and recently, we got a five hundred thousand dollar donation from Blue Cross and Blue Shield that we're administering five thousand dollar grants, so we've been giving, uh, our smallest, uh, most needy volunteer fire departments five thousand dollar grant checks, and, uh, I'm personally delivering all of those, so, uh, as of today, I think we're up to about sixty-five, so we've got thirty-five more to do, we'll have that all done uh, by the end of next, next week, uh, I do want to mention, uh, the insurance side, uh, flood insurance, we've, we've held, uh, flood insurance conferences or town halls all across North Carolina since Hurricane Florence, and what we learned from Hurricane Florence is very few people in North Carolina had flood insurance, and the message that we saw after Hurricane Florence, if, if it rains where you live, you need flood insurance, so we partnered with the real estate agents and insurance agents to conduct continuing education classes on, on flood and flood insurance, and community colleges have hosted some of these events, uh, this college is one that would be good, Mr. Chairman, for us to do one of those, uh, over the coming months, and for those of you that might have any questions, go to our website, ncdoi.com or ncdoi.gov, and just take a look at all of the things that's under the North Carolina Department of Insurance, that almost nobody realizes how much is under that department, we regulate bail bonds, uh, surety bonds, collection agencies, we, we we're the chief building inspector for the state, we regulate engineering codes, the state building code council, regulate all kinds of insurance, and we have law enforcement officers, uh, sworn law enforcement officers that are criminal investigators, arson investigators, and, uh, going after insurance fraud is, is a big, big deal to help hold down your rates, so I'm looking forward to continuing our, our longstanding relationship with the community college system, and I just thank you all for having me here today, Mr. President, and, uh, I look forward to, to coming back, next chance I get, thank you so much.
Very good, Mr. Commissioner, we appreciate you being here, and the staff here with us today, uh, it's our honor to have you here, uh, with us, so we're, we're pleased that it worked out that you can, you can fit this in here, leading into our trustee meeting to say hello to our trustees as well.
Thank you, I, I want to thank all of the trustees for their willingness to serve, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, for leading this crew.
I'm not much of a leader, they follow very well.
You're doing well, thank you.
Alright, so thank you very much, Mr. Commissioner, we appreciate it a, a bunch, so, Mr. Chairman, I-
Thank you, thank you. We're, we're practicing social separation here, but we've got hand sanitizers all around the room, is there any questions? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys, all of you for coming, we do appreciate you.
Thank you all, absolutely, thank you.
Ed April, I'm sorry, I said guys.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, we'll, uh, now with our guests departing, we'll, uh, I guess we can, we can proceed on with our normal business, calling the meeting to order and so forth, as you're ready. We do have, I think all of you on, online or virtually or on the phone, uh, can see, but we do have, uh, here, uh, present, uh, today, uh, in person, of course, Terry, our chairman, and, and Keith, um, as, as well as Bert and Arnold, so, uh, and myself, so we're, we're all here spread out in this room, and thank you all for joining us on the phone, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you. Uh, as normal, I'll read the, uh, ethics awareness statement, in accordance with the state government Ethics Act, it's our duty of every board member to avoid both the conflict of interest and the appearance of conflict, does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the board today? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from any undue participation in any matter above. Anyone have any conflicts? Not hearing, accept that, and we need a motion for, uh, consent that, of our agenda, could I have a motion for that? Arnold made the motion, and Bert seconded, any question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you all for participating, Dr. Cox?
And, and just for the record, there were no, uh, dissenting votes on that motion, I take it? No nays, okay, just wanted to make sure, alright, so folks, I've got, uh, for my report, uh, the, the, you know, the first, the first thing I've got on here is just to acknowledge, uh, the, uh, the, uh, empty seat that we have here at our table, uh, with, uh, with the passing of, uh, trustee Sylvia Robinson, uh, we're all devastated by, by Sylvia's, uh, loss with this longstanding battle she's had with this cancer, uh, Sylvia was a great board member, uh, dedicated member here, has served, uh, multiple terms, uh, on, on the board, and, uh, we're all gonna miss her a lot, um, we'll have a, uh, a more formal, uh, presentation that we're gonna want to make, uh, at a future meeting, when we're able to get, get back together more in person, um, our August meeting, uh, I believe is slated for Allegheny, uh, this year in the rotation, uh, we'll be coordinating maybe with Sylvia's family to see if, uh, if that would be suitable to do that presentation up there, it'd be more timely in August, uh, to do it there, but if it's a hardship on them, we could wait and do it when we're back here in Wilkes, so, um, but I just wanted to, uh, again, just express, express my, uh, sadness here, and, and I know you all join me in that with Sylvia's passing, so. Um, I wanted to, uh, give a quick update on the COVID nineteen response here at the college, I sent you all out, a document- I sent you all out a document earlier this morning that gives a fair amount of detail about different things that we're having to do here at the college in response to this COVID-19 pandemic and our return to campus. It's been a very involved process. We've actually had a task force of about 20 faculty and staff and members of our leadership team, also including Rachel Willard with the Health Department, just to talk about what are the right safety protocols for us to put in place as we begin, have begun here this summer to transition some of our students back to face-to-face instruction. So I would tell you that the vast majority of our classes are still online this summer. They were already scheduled to be mostly for the summer, but we're probably 85% plus online in just a few classes that, things like welding and automotive and some of our health science classes that require clinical component. Those, we're starting to have more of a face-to-face contact with. Our plan is for the fall, the faculty, we really asked the faculty to weigh in pretty heavily on there. They're thinking about the best way for us to deliver instruction moving into the fall with some of the new parameters we're going to have to operate under with social distancing and then taking extra care with the COVID-19 pandemic still in full force. So the fall semester is going to likely look a lot like it does this summer with the majority of our classes still having a pretty significant online component. And we're likely going to be restricted with the face-to-face classes to those that really need to have that hands-on component, things like welding and automotive and applied engineering and those type of courses, along with our health science courses that do have the clinical labs and so forth. We're going to be announcing here the 1st of July what our actual plans are going to be, but it's going to be in that vein of continuing to have a pretty strong online presence and still have some limitations with the face-to-face. That'll help us with having some reduced numbers on campus to be able to spread out and, like we're doing here in the meeting today, maintaining that six feet of social distance. The rule we put in place for our students and our faculty and staff is when you're on campus and you're moving about, and you may find yourself in a place where you encounter someone with less than six feet, we're asking people, not asking, we're telling people, you have to wear the mask. When you're in here, we're spread out as we are now, you can remove the mask if you're more than six feet away. So that's the stance we've taken. It's in alignment with the CDC recommendations, and so that's what we're doing. But I'll stop there to pause just for a minute to see if there are any questions specifically about this COVID-19 and our response to it. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay. All right. Here and then we'll move on. If you do have, you read that document, if you see anything in it that causes you any concern or raises any questions with you, certainly reach out to me in an email or call me, and we can talk about those things at length. But it's a lot of information to absorb, but we'll answer any questions that you have. I wanted to announce to the trustees, we have selected a new VP of Instruction. As you all know, Blair Hancock, a longtime employee here at the college and a stellar leader on our administrative council, is retiring here at the end of this month. And we have gone through an extensive search process and have found what we believe is going to be a dynamite replacement for Blair. So Yolanda Wilson is coming to us into this role. Her official start date will be July 1, though she's going to be up here moving some stuff into her office this Friday. I had intended to have her be here to say a couple of words to you today, but I neglected to get that invitation to her before she had scheduled an appointment, a doctor's appointment with her son, trying to get some details ironed out before she transitions up here. So she sends her well wishes, and she's excited to meet you all in August, hopefully many of you in person at our August trustee meeting. But she is coming, she lives in Cabarrus County, and she's down at York Technical Community College in South Carolina right now. She's been through the Aspen Program like I went through it, and that actually was one of the connections that drew her to us. She saw our plans and her strategic plan and some of the work we were doing, and it resonated with her, and she's really excited to be joining us, and we're ecstatic to have her joining our team. So I look forward to y'all meeting her soon. Want to give a quick shout out to some of our students who have won some awards. We have, we had some students and employees who have won national awards that I wanted to just share with you all. So let me just read this briefly to you. Wilkes Community College would like to congratulate our student-employee winners in the 54th Annual National Career Development Association's Poetry and Art Contest. All four of WCC's winners placed in the state contest before proceeding to the nationals. Adrian Guerrero won first place nationally in the mixed media art category, and Jamie Martin won second place nationally. Both students were enrolled in Amber Ardner's Computer Design Basics course during the fall semester. Sabrina Bowman, the WCC Student Activities Coordinator, won first place nationally in the adult open mixed media art category, and Sonya Jordan, the CNA instructor, won first place nationally in the adult open poetry category. So their artwork and prose are featured in the NCDA website, and we can share that website with you if you'd like to see it. But we're exceedingly proud of both our students and our staff who have won those national awards, so congratulations to them. Trustees, I shared with you all earlier, but I want to do it here publicly. I sent it to you via email, but in case you might have missed it, each year, each of the 58 community colleges selects a student for the Dallas Harin Award. And Dallas Harin was one of the founders of our community college system, and he had kind of a mantra that he lived by, that we must take people where they are and carry them as far as they can go. So the award that is given out each year in his honor goes to a student who's really overcome some significant adversity. They've had a tough go of it, but they've overcome a lot of challenges and persevered. And so this year, the student that we selected here at Wilkes Community College was Mary Elizabeth Hanawald, and she's up at our Ash Campus, and she has overcome a significant amount of challenges and issues, came to the college at 56 years old with basically starting all over. Had to start in remedial classes, the very basic classes we had. She quickly, with a lot of support from the college and the staff up there at the Ash Campus, she got right on track and has completed her program. And just here in May of 2020, she's just completed the radiography program. So she was an outstanding student here, and that's who we nominated for the award, and I'm proud to say that she did go on and win the statewide Dallas Harin Achievement Award. So kudos for Wilkes Community College and for Mary Elizabeth Hanawald. She's going to represent us very well. So that was an announcement that was made on our statewide president's call last week, so I was proud of that. Mr. Chairman, that is it for me, as far as announcements go, and I think we've got a couple items here for action with the Personnel Committee and the Program and Planning Committee. We're ready to move on to those.
Morgan, are you available to see you?
So Morgan, we'll start with you with the parental leave policy and procedure.
I'm here. Okay. We have, for your consideration, a parental leave policy. This begins on page four in your packet. This is, this policy allows paid parental leave for individuals, eight weeks for those giving birth, and four weeks for those other qualifying individuals that don't give birth that operate in a parental role. This policy mirrors the policy that was adopted for state agency employees, as well as the UNC system and several other community colleges. This comes through, this is a Personnel Committee request. Be happy to answer any questions. And Sherry Cox is on the call. This is one of her babies, so she can probably answer anything that you want to know about this. If there are no questions, we have asked if this policy be approved.
We would need a motion, I guess, for approval for this, correct?
Correct.
This is Ricky.
Approval. Ricky Brown making the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
That's Josh Rotten making the second.
Thank you, Josh. Any question beyond what we've already heard? All in favor of the motion, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed likewise? Motion carries.
All right, Mr. Chairman, our next, and last order of business, is a series of degree programs that we are recommending that we add here at the college. So I'm going to defer to Kim Fall and let her share just a little bit with you about the nature of these programs that we're looking to add. Kim?
Good afternoon. So these are not so much new programs as concentrations within already existing programs. So these are part of our Associate Art and Associate in Science programs, and those are the two programs that students who are planning to transfer to a four-year university do. And basically, they're taking Gen Ed courses, which is equivalent to the first two years of a university degree. We have a couple of specialties already within Arts and Sciences. We have an engineering specialty for those students who want to transfer to get degrees in engineering. We also have a nursing specialty within Arts and Sciences. So this is a new specialty for students who want to become teachers. Part of the reason that this was developed, as many of you know, we've had a real drop in the number of students who are pursuing four-year degrees in education, and so the state is worried about the ability to attract teachers. And so they've developed this program as a two-year degree in collaboration with the four-year schools to allow students to do their Gen Ed, but also get four key education classes. And I think there's two reasons for that is, first of all, it gives them some credit so that when they transfer, they can really transfer as a junior, and they're not lacking those early education classes. But I think the other reason is, is to make sure that students really want to go into education, because sometimes what we find is they decide that, they go to the university, they do education, and they come to the end and they say, "Oh, I don't really want to be a teacher." So this is helping to ensure students are really confident and wanting to go into education, and then giving them some of those key early education classes so that when they transfer, they really can complete the degree in four years. And so there's two paths. There's the teacher education focused on the arts, the humanities, the social sciences, and then there's the teacher education focused on those students who want to do education related to the math and the sciences. That's why there is two pathways. Once those are approved for us to offer, then we will also develop a career in college promise pathway so that high school students who are getting a head start with us while they're in high school can focus on the education pathway if they know they want to be teachers.
So really, as Kim has stated, just to summarize, if you're a student, you're starting out with us, and you're just doing a general college transfer degree, and then you go to become a teacher at Appalachian, then if you haven't made that decision early on and you haven't done any of these prerequisites in the education field, then it's going to be really hard for you to finish in four years. So having this choice for those students who know they want to be a teacher, when they arrive on our door, we can really give them a much better chance of being able to go two years here and then two years at a university and actually finish in four years and not five. So this would be, we think these are two great programs. I do want to mention, we had a, we did pull together our Program and Planning Committee yesterday and did a preview of this with them, so they would be comfortable forwarding this on in the form of a motion. Of course, Sylvia had chaired that committee, and with this COVID-19, we had been laid in pulling that committee together, but I would defer to Connie or Susan or Pam, if you all have anything you want to add about this before we put it forward as a motion.
I think it's a great...
Kim, this is Rick. I have a question. So this program is open to go to any University of North Carolina system, college that has teaching degrees?
The public schools and some of the private schools have signed on as well, but it's definitely part of the comprehensive articulation agreement we have with all 16 UNC schools.
Good. Thank you very much. It seems to me to be a very good program, as Jeff said.
Yeah. We think it'll be a big cost savings to a lot of families who's, you know, kids are wanting to pursue a career in teaching. It's a great, it's a great pathway to get the first two years with us, finish up two years at a university. We hope it'll open up the pipeline to get more of our young folks to consider careers in public education. So the Program and Planning Committee did vote yesterday to move this forward as a motion, Mr. Chairman, so we just need a second to do that, I suppose.
Okay. We have, the Planning Committee has sent...
I second it.
Still can't hear you.
Now you should be able to go. We muted ourselves there by mistake somehow. Sorry about that.
Well, I've been muted many times before.
I didn't mean to mute you, Mr. Chairman. I promise I didn't.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of the four documents that were approved? Okay, we have a vote. Favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Motion carries. The information items, the only one I have is the next board meeting will be Thursday, August the 6th, and we'll determine a place and time later this month, in July.
I would, and it may be worth just putting out there, you know, typically we rotate the August meeting between Ash and Allegheny, and I think this year we'd be slated to go back to Allegheny if my memory serves correctly. I think we were there at Ash last year, did the kind of opening, but is that, would that be the desire with the COVID-19 and everything else? Would we want to defer that and decide later?
It's in, it's on my calendar for Allegheny.
Yeah.
But I'm sure we can move it if necessary, anywhere we need to be.
Does anybody have any objection to proceeding on with having it in Allegheny in August? And we'll likely set up like we are here today, but maybe try to accommodate having more people who can and want to come in person to be able to, but also have this option open for those of you who may not, who may prefer to continue to join virtually for a while. I'm thinking we could have both those options available in Allegheny. All right.
Dr. Cox?
Yes.
It's Kim. Do you want to mention our current plans for August 7th in graduation?
You're the expert on that. Why don't you just share, Kim, to jot it up?
And I was thinking about it being that you're talking about August 6, the night before. So our current plan, as you know, we have... So our current plan, as you know, we had to cancel graduation in May because of COVID. So our plan right now is on August 7th, we're actually going to hold four ceremonies. We're going to hold one per division, and because of the rules of social distancing, each student would be allowed to take, have two guests come to the ceremony. And so we'll have one ceremony at 10:00, one at 1:00, one at 4:00, and one at 7:00.
And before anybody makes a motion to fire, let me just say, the expectation would be for the trustees, if you could pick two of those, we want to divide out and socially distance you all as well, so we wouldn't expect you all to come to all four of those ceremonies all day long, and they're going to be shorter, you know, a little bit shorter ceremonies as well, obviously with having to spread out. So we'll, we can communicate with you and probably send out some sort of survey to you to see which of those two services you'd like to attend. Of course, you'd be welcome to come to all, but that's a bit much, probably, and it'd actually help us a little with staging. They only have half as many there as well, so.
We have 206 students who have responded that they plan to participate in the ceremony, but for some of those students, that was based on the original plan. So now we're going to survey those students to see how many of them will actually attend based on the new plan. So we should have better information about that in about a week.
I would just add that even, that plan would call for using the Walker Center and partitioning off every other row, and then having the families sit together, but then having three seats spaced between them and the next family. So it's spreading out, basically 150 or so audience members in that, in auditorium, and the students themselves would be spread out the same way. So it's, we're still waiting on the final word if we're going to be able to proceed with the ceremony in that manner. There's a chance that even with doing the six feet of social distancing, we still may not be able to put that many people in one room together in August. If that were to happen, we've got a Plan B where the students and their families basically would drive up in their cars, and we would bring in one family, one student at a time, and the student and his or her family would come in, walk down, come across the stage. We would give them the diploma, they would go back out, get in their car and drive on, and we would just rotate that way, and we wouldn't have the official ceremony with all the speeches and everything else, but it at least would allow the students to come, walk across the stage, and get their diplomas. So we'll see how we're going to proceed, but those are the two, kind of the two working options that we have right now, with the first one being the preference if we're able to do it that way. Thank you, Kim, for reminding me that we need to bring that up today.
Does anyone have any questions or announcements they'd like to make? I'm glad to have everyone here and online. Thank you for attending. Need a motion to adjourn? Arnold? Bert, second? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you for all your participation.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Thank you.